Good evening. The council has called this work session to order. I want to ask Councilwoman Jackson if you have some time to give us the application.
If you value this, if you have any thought, just come to me and say, "Lord God, thank you for being an awesome God. Thank you for being an Almighty God. Thank you for being a gracious God. Oh God, thank you for being our Father. Thank you for being our great innocence. Oh God, thank you for meeting the issue everyone around these places. We are thankful for covering our shame, Lord God, and taking away our sin, the reproach that has come upon us, Lord God, for the many things that we have set ourselves in. Lord God, we just thank you for being your Redeemer and a healer, a deliverer, Lord God. We give your name praise, Lord, and honor this afternoon. Lord God, we just come before you holy precious throne, asking that you and you alone will have your way. Lord God, lead us and guide us. We yield ourselves to your, your will and your way. Oh God, we ask that nothing here be done that is not killing in your sight. Oh God, hold us accountable. You said we should give him accountability, every word spoken, on every idle word, oh God. And so we just ask you to be with us and lead us as we try to do things that are directed by you for your sake. Oh God, let nothing fall on bad ground, oh God, but let every work that is done here this evening be for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Now to the citizens' request. Ms. Felicia Lucky, Black Belt Community Foundation Funding Request.
Good afternoon. I'm Felicia Lucky, I'm the president of the Black Belt Community Foundation. And it was maybe a little under two years ago when I came before this council asking for your support for our local Head Start program. And at that time, the Head Start grant was open for application, meaning that anyone from anywhere could come in and apply to administer Head Start to our children from the Black Belt area. And the community approached us, asked us if we would be willing to do Head Start. And while at the foundation, that's not what we have typically done, because we wanted to make sure that it stayed in local control, we said yes. So we've learned a lot, and today, for two years now, we've been providing services to three hundred and seven children and families across four counties in the Black Belt. So we're excited about this. So I want to come and give you a report back on this. One of the things that we've done, we're hoping that over the next year, we'll have some data to be able to show you how our students have grown from one place to another, how they've actually been able to grow and are better prepared to go into school or begin kindergarten the first year. But I'm here today to ask a request of the council. As we do work across our twelve counties, the Black Belt Community Foundation's board has issued a challenge to each of our counties, and that is that the foundation will put up five thousand dollars and has challenged the community to match that five thousand dollars, so then there could be a total of ten thousand dollars to go back out into the community. So we're coming today before the council, asking your support. And we know that for many of us, times are harder, we're trying to find ways to make pennies add up to dollars, but we're hoping that together with our money, we'll be able to do it. Our five thousand dollars alone, your money alone, could do less, but together, we could possibly do more. And what we've included in a package that we've shared with you is a letter and also just a brief copy of grant awards that we've done over the last, over this last month, I believe. And in your letter, it shows that since two thousand and five, with the awarding of our first grants, that we have awarded nearly seven hundred thousand dollars into the Dallas County area. And that is just from two thousand and five to date. And those are resources that the foundation has positioned itself to go out and bring resources in, to put them back into the communities. So you'll see, from looking through this program, looking at organizations that have been funded in Selma, particularly from the Fathers of St. Edmund to the Maghreb AIDS Learning Center, to the Selma Dallas County Historical Preservation Society, to Arts Revive, to the Black Belt Benefit Group. So these are local groups that are here in this community. And part of what happens with, if, well, I'm going to say when, which we hope that you will choose to give, is that local individuals decide how these funds are then distributed to this community. It doesn't go to somewhere else, and somebody from another county or another place gets to decide, but that's all in local control. So we're asking that, we don't want to leave any money on the table. Every county has been given this challenge of five thousand dollars throughout our twelve counties. So we want to make sure that the Selma Dallas County area is able to get the money and resources that belong to it as well. We don't want to leave any money on the table, is what we're asking for. So we're hoping that you will help us to do just that.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Benjamin. But council members, we're doing our budget here. This, please, consider this, putting it in our budget for the upcoming year, doing our budget here. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky.
You're welcome.
And for all that you do in our county, you are challenging the county, the counties, correct?
Yes.
Have you gone to the county commission?
Just about forty minutes ago.
About four, and what did they say?
Well, they're, I have to submit a written request to them, in addition to what I've said, and go through their, and go through their system.
Okay.
So we're hoping that they will be able to do so.
So are you asking the county itself, meaning Selma, Valley Grande, all the cities included? Are you asking the county itself for five thousand, or are you asking the cities within the county for an additional five thousand?
Well, what we're doing is, we're asking for five thousand dollars. We would love, if the city could give five thousand, and the county could give five thousand, we'd love, and that way, we'd have fifteen thousand dollars to put back into the Selma Dallas County area. So that is, our ask is five thousand dollars, but we are grateful whatever you make the city give.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, number one, you did go to the county, because, yeah, we're going to have to pool our resources here.
We will there.
And so you just left there.
Yes.
A few minutes ago. And then it says, your gift of five thousand will leverage an additional seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes. Well, that is, let me see, I'm not quite sure. What we do is, we usually take the five thousand dollars that's been put up, then we have local, our volunteers help raise money, and they do different types of events, and a lot of it just comes from individual giving. So sometimes, if an individual gives to the foundation, they were earmarked for Dallas County, and then those dollars are taken, and they go directly to this pool that will then go out to Dallas County. I'll give an example, in Sumter County, I think last year, they had seventeen thousand dollars to award, and their county input money, and others' input money, so they actually had more than just the ten thousand dollars that they would have had. And that is a much smaller county, so the, our goal is, the more we can get, then the more we'll be able to reach, because Dallas is the largest county in our area.
And then finally, this is kind of exciting, you brought your resources, and you gave me some ACT practice books on last year.
Yes.
You all still offer those these years?
We may have a few left, I'm not sure. I do think we have some that we can check and see, and if we do, we can get those for you.
Okay, so if I can get those at some point.
Yes, let me make sure we have some left, I think we do.
President Booy is saying that he has some too. Those books are expensive. You all gave math and science and English to every single one of the youth conference participants on last year, and aside from the youth conference again. And the parents were very, very appreciative of that. For the books that you all gave to every single participant, those books are very, very expensive, and it helped them out. We were able to get an instructor from Wallace to come over and teach out of those books, so I want to say, thank you for the resources.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, I wanted to touch base with you about the books. I have some too, you know.
All right, bring on y'all.
So, you know, I shared some of mine with you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I will say, a lot of what the foundation works really hard to do is to be the vehicle for that other resources will come into. So we have a partnership with the University of Alabama at Birmingham, and we work through the Gear Up Grant, which is gaining early access into college. I can't remember what the acronym stands for. So it is through that partnership with them that they had, we were able to get these books, and then to distribute back out. So a lot of where we try to position ourselves is in a place that we can bring resources in, and then push them back out. And then what helps is to know that it was helpful, and then to also know that there is still a need for them, if you're going to make the same case. So we're glad to know that. And in your letter, I hope you'll see, because we do a camp with Auburn University. So you know, some people are Alabama fans, some people are Auburn fans, but we have an opportunity for our students, regardless of where, which, where their loyalties lie, we have an opportunity for them to attend a World Youth Long Camp at Auburn University. And it's already, they've already done it for this year, but you'll see the names of the students who attended this year. We work hard to get students from both the public and private schools, where they have a chance to get to know what careers are available, what staying on the college campus is like.
That makes a good point. What university does it?
It was at Auburn University. And I will say, Auburn has been a favorite for seven years. They have helped us to do that camp, and they bring, they help, they bring the charter bus here, and we pick up students from other counties as well, and then they take them there. So their parents, if they can get them to Selma, then they have a ride, and they get to stay on campus and have their own little meal parties over their college student, and they love it. You know, and they love Chick-fil-A, and we took for granted that, you know, we get to have Chick-fil-A more, but like, they ate that almost every single day that they went on campus. Every day, breakfast and lunch.
How can you have students this week apply for next year, an application for next year?
Well, we've not. We've not started it yet, but I will say, this is one of the things we've asked them to do, is always to write an essay around five hundred words or less. And it is not definite that it has to be that number, but to explain what their legacy is. We challenge them to think about their legacy in the Black Belt. So they, and we work with students who are rising freshmen to rising seniors. So we hope that you all, any help that we can get in getting students. Like I said, we work with both the public and private schools to try to make sure we have a fair representation of students at the camp, and there's no cost to them.
Also, I would like to recognize the board member, Reverend Dr. Wolf.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lucky. To tell you what, she's a Councilwoman of BBG too, and she's my Delta sister. So yes, she's women tributary, the Delta leadership is just, so I'm glad to see you, and you just keep, you just keep growing, doing great things, and we're glad to see it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. I'm one of the recipients, and BBG is one of the recipients of those grants. But I'm just here for a simple request. Y'all may be familiar with the Selma Two Hundred Documentary that Black Belt Benefit Group and Arts Revive partnered to do with Blue Magdalena Films recently. And we put up window clings around downtown, and one of the stories that was put up on Lauderdale was put up in windows that are tinted, and it's hard to see Ms. Joanne Bland's story. That's the story that's up in there. And there are some good windows at the building on Washington Street, directly behind the Welcome Center there, and that could fit those windows. And it's just a request to see if we can get permission to put them up in there. Nothing from the city will do all the work and everything.
Nineteen Washington Street, Ms. Boy.
It's Joanne Bland's story, yeah.
I thought that was already approved. Was that not already okay? Okay, okay. Could, we could send the gentleman there?
Is it being moved where?
It's in Southland Studios, which is AC Reece Artist Workshop.
Number five?
No, nine and five, like kind of right behind the wall on Lauderdale, right next to the alley.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And the window, it's hard to see them, I think, through the tinted windows there, so they were requested that they were moved.
Okay, and so, we have a window on the Maghreb too, at the Welcome Center. Did you, did you look at that one?
I think it's big enough. Yeah, we just didn't want to cover up the Welcome Center, but.
It's, I, I, I attended the, I attended the event, so I saw the size of it.
Yeah.
And I think it.
We walked around it.
Yeah, we did, it's like we're friends again. So, on one side, I think it'll fit on one side, one side, what do you think?
On one side of the Welcome Center?
Yeah, like when you're facing the Welcome Center.
Well, there's two.
The biggest window.
There's two of them.
Oh, she has two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. I was going to say Maghreb, because nineteen Washington is so off the beaten path.
Yeah, yeah. If they'll fit there, that'd be good. I mean, can we get them both approved, and we'll see if, if which one works. Thank you. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Hi, Claybird. Thank you for working with other agencies like y'all do, and you work with every agency who comes before you that you possibly can, and individuals. I love seeing that, you know, I love collaboration. No one of us is as smart as all of us, or as strong as all of us, and what you're doing is brightening our ability to serve the community in a larger way, you and Arts Revive, and I'll go together, work together. I just wanted to say shout out, yay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Next, town's report.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Good.
The couple things, mainly I want to talk to you guys about is this jail case. President Booy, Mayor, Judge Nunn, County's Attorney, John Kelly, and I met last week. I won't go into a lot of the history of it. So the city has leased the county, at least sixteen beds in the county jail, okay? It's been in place for like twenty years, I think. It expires in December. So the county, right now, the city pays the county two hundred thousand dollars for sixteen beds. And the county bears the expense of medicals, like hospital bills, things outside the jail, okay? The county, they may be about to know it tonight, is going to propose to allow the city to renew, and again, this is the first we heard of it last week, to renew a year lease, so it'll be December two thousand and nineteen through December two thousand and twenty, for the same amount, two hundred thousand dollars, but they want the city now to pay for medicals for inmates in hospitals. All right, your first question's going to be, well, what's that number? I don't know, I've asked it too, and I don't have it, and so we've asked for that number, I don't know if we're ever going to get it. So, you know, you guys, I would suggest, don't, obviously don't vote on this far. And then I've emailed the lease agreement to Cory, the proposer, so he can present it to everybody. We need to look at it really closely, but it was brought, this was brought to our attention last week, so I wanted to go ahead and give you all a heads up.
I would suggest, you know, look at it for the public's safety permit, before we move forward, because we're not going to vote on tomorrow, and other things that we also need to consider, before we move forward for.
The other caveat too is, and y'all probably know more about this than I do, county says the city owes thirty thousand dollars for this.
Fair warning. Fair warning, I'll say the boot camp, and I'll say the trailer bomb. I'm going to try for that contract.
We've requested that contract as well. And again, there's a lot of stuff we don't know yet, but I didn't want to just throw this on you at the last minute, you know, I want you to.
We have Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman.
So yes, please get us a contract for the thirty thousand dollars. And for the two hundred thousand dollars, is this for all the cities in the county? Selma, Valley Grande, Orville, whatever the cities are. Is this two hundred thousand dollars for everybody?
It's just Selma.
Okay, do we know how much the other cities are paying? The county?
I do not, though.
Okay, would you please find that out for us, please?
That's what we asked about.
Yeah, we had, we didn't.
We can't foot the bill for everybody. So if you could find out what all the cities in the county are paying, and what the county itself is paying, because all these cities sit inside of the county, which bears a responsibility in itself. So if you could find out that, since they want us to pay medical bills now, and add those on, please find out those things for me, if you would.
Right.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And these are just for misdemeanor.
Yeah, I mean, this is going to be like DUIs, domestic.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes, we're going to need some data, so sixteen beds for just misdemeanor cases. And misdemeanor cases generally, if we're looking at DUI, it's mandatory twelve hours, so they're not even staying a twenty-four hour period before they're allowed to bond out. And generally, they, because, well, not generally, the law states that they can't stay there more than seventy-two hours before they go before someone to bond out. And so they're going to go before the municipal court judge, and they're going to allow them to leave if they weren't able to bond out at that point. And so why are we paying two hundred thousand dollars when we're not sure how many municipal cases are actually going to the jail? So I need data to determine how many municipal cases are going, if we have five hundred. Let's just do some math. So are they charging us by day?
I think it's just flat, the last nineteen years, I think it's just.
So it's just two hundred thousand dollars a year?
Two hundred thousand dollars a year.
But plus, this year, they want us to be responsible for medical and something else?
Well, you know, my first assertion would be that we've overpaid, because, somebody get to calculate that, I got this new phone, and it's not really working, and then you do about sixteen, two hundred thousand dollars, I mean, that's like.
I think this is a discussion for.
Well, I, I, I want to bring this up, thank you, Councilwoman, but I want to bring it up, because what I want to have is that we go back and negotiate at a better rate. Because sixteen, sixteen beds at two hundred thousand, when most of our offenders are not even staying a full day, or not required to stay a full day, and it's not like on a misdemeanor case that they're being sentenced to prison. These felony cases, they may be in there two or three years, but that's the county's responsibility. So now they're incurring, we're incurring two hundred thousand dollars for something that probably would have cost us about fifty thousand dollars, if we paid for each person. And maybe we need to look at a contract that says they're going to charge us, you know, a hundred fifty dollars per person, per day, or something like, we may come out with that, because based on the math, I mean, we could, I could go and stay at the Hyatt for a year and not pay two hundred thousand dollars, you know, and then there, I mean, they call it Hotel Huntsman, maybe Hotel Grandtham now, but it's not Hyatt, you know, and so we don't, we don't want to do that. And the state has a rate that they pay for each offender that's there. And it comes from the Department of Corrections, they're going to pay a rate for each person that's there. So what are they doing with the money that they get from the state for each offenders that's in the Dallas County jail?
Well, I don't know what they got it, yeah.
Right, and as the councilperson has already stated, and what are the other cities paying? Is Orville paying two hundred thousand dollars a year? Is Valley Grande paying two hundred thousand dollars a year? And so, and then, what I've seen happening in the, in the court system is oftentimes, when we have someone that have, may have serious medical needs, they come back before the court, and ask them to be relieved, so they won't have to incur the costs. How do we know that they relieve ours at them, and allow us to incur the costs without going back before the court and appealing that they can't afford?
And these are all questions that we asked.
Yeah.
And we've also asked our judges, municipal judges, give us an idea, like, how many, you know, how many people are sending to jail? You know, what are, what are the numbers? So we don't, I don't, again, this was last Thursday, so we don't have any of that yet, but these are definitely all things that we.
And I, I hear you're in this position, Attorney Jones, but this is not, this is not the first time that I've asked for this information, because this is not the first time this has been presented. Actually, it was presented about two years ago, you all called when they're there before, and stated that you want to build a municipal complex because of this contract. And so it was presented before, and I asked these same questions, and no one could get the data. Where the data is going to derive from my vote, and my, and it should determine how the county, the city spends their money, you all's money. And so we want to spend it in the best way possible, and be as responsible as possible.
One way or the other, I'm just telling y'all what's there.
They voted tonight to allow us.
They were going to.
They were going to vote tonight to allow us to come back?
Well, to present, the city has to accept it or counter, but to present the proposal, but they could have not, I don't know. I just suspected from the meeting last week, with Judge Nunn and the jury, that they were going to vote.
When is the contract over?
December.
December twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I think it's December first.
Because I think we overtook thirty-three thousand for the last quarter, twenty years.
October through December.
So we owe them thirty-three thousand, and then we owe them thirty thousand for the detention.
I would get that contract.
For the contract. When did we sign that contract?
It was back here, it was before my. Twenty sixteen.
That's for August, that's for August? Twenty sixteen combined, that's for August.
Oh, okay.
Twenty, wait, I haven't finished, I'm just trying, so we entered into a contract in twenty sixteen, for the year of twenty sixteen, or for the last three years, for thirty thousand?
I haven't seen it, and we asked for it in that meeting, and it sounded like it's due in twenty sixteen, and it just was never paid.
So, and we haven't entered another contract?
No, I don't think so, to my knowledge.
So just one year, we paid, or we helped assist with the boot camp in the period. And we haven't had to do that, or we haven't entered into a contract? And have the children that are going through the juvenile system still been allowed to go to those camps? Have any of Selma been turned away?
Well, that would be counted too, something.
Wait, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting to.
We all asked this too.
That's what I'm getting to, this. Juvenile's go through the county.
And that's the county too, the juveniles, as you know.
Right, juvenile's go through the county, and so why is the city incurring the costs? Because a child lives within the city limits, when this is actually their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
I mean, their next thing, they're going to come and say, every murder that happens, every, every felony case that happens, that comes, that has a city and Selma address, we want you to pay for them. So get ready.
All right, thank you. Councilman McShur.
We are caught between a rock and a hard place, Council. And we need to be careful how we treat our comments about this contract. I concur, we need to find as much data as we can, such as, what was the cost per number for these sixteen beds? It may not have been that much.
We have said, we haven't yet, but we.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure that they can retrieve it. And of course, if they, if the county played hard, and I hope and pray that they don't, then we're at their mercy. And I do realize now, the wisdom of the man when he recommended building the Capitol Municipal, a building that will relieve us of that two hundred thousand dollars obligation for our sixteen beds, and that two hundred thousand dollars would have paid the annual, would have paid the annual cost for that, I think, seven million dollars that the proposal to build that complex. I hope and pray that we can't come to a reasonable understanding with our colleagues at the county, at the county. It's going to require more money than I think we have, especially with just thirty thousand dollars a year, or thirty-three thousand?
No, no, the end of fiscal year. No, no.
That's thirty.
For, for the jail, the contract, the jail for the last fiscal year, we still owe thirty-three thousand.
We still have to pay that.
Yes, sir.
But it's not due yet.
It's not due yet.
So the contract ran, runs each year in October, but so the thirty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars, thirty cents is for October, November, December of twenty nineteen. The thirty thousand for the boot camp is something different.
Okay, Councilor, if you go back and find as much data as you can, when we resume our deliberation about this contract, we could be more informed as to what the actual cost for housing these sixteen beds cost the county.
Right.
And then we could realistically determine how we're going to foot this annual cost, because there's no other option that we have.
All right, Councilwoman Jackson.
Councilwoman, you want to do that one again?
No, that's okay, I'll, that's fine, I'll just, we'll go for the maybe, I'll just.
Okay, I want, so first of all, the sixteen beds, when we say, look at the cost for the sixteen beds, medical costs, these are individuals, so that may change. So if I have one person that turns in, or just say a domestic violence case, where one person got stabbed, I got to keep them twelve hours, but the wound is so bad that I need to take them to the, to the hospital. Now the city is incurring that cost. Or someone, right, tripped, tripped and fell because of public intent, or a DUI, when they got out, they fell over a rock trying, trying to stand up and, and do their sobriety test, and now we got to take them to the hospital. So this, this variable for medical costs changes based on the individual that's actually coming for that bed, the sixteen beds that are available, that are really not available, because we have prison overcrowded, jail overcrowded. So I, I, I'm not sure that we have actual sixteen beds manned out and said, these are specifically with the Selma city name on, and you have sixteen beds that cannot be touched, everybody else has to sit on the floor until you get a misdemeanor case. I don't know if that's happened. But you know, at least. But you know, at leadership, we went through the jail, it just seemed to be really crowded. And so I'd like to see if that's happening to make sure that the people that we're paying two hundred thousand dollars for actually have the best pillows and the best mattresses. I mean, you know, if we're gonna pay that much money, we need to make sure that they're getting the best.
All right, you know the question?
That's ridiculous.
You know the question? All right, Attorney, move forward.
All right. And two, I've requested, y'all, from another lawyer, and I know from other contracts to other cities, not just in Selma, I'm doing, but other cities around the state, I mean, I just have curiosity.
Yeah, I, I think I do want to add, so I was just gonna, um, wait to get this information, but, um, I, I, I was, and I will get this information, believe me, but do you know right offhand what the statute says the responsibilities will be for that large?
It will, it can be negotiated in this contract.
Okay, that statutorily it says that, it doesn't say who's, the city's responsible or the county's responsible?
If the city, typically the county can be responsible, but they could, they could.
Oh, what does the statute say about, usually the statute gives the responsibility to one entity or the other?
I mean, if it's the county jail, it's on the county.
I got you, that's, that's what I'm following.
Yeah, it can be, they can put it all, the city, the city can agree. For the city.
I, I, yeah, I, I.
And I think from.
Check into that.
Yeah.
Before that, it's Saturday, but, um, could we have a, I hope Saturday morning, next week? I won't be allowed this way, but.
Next week.
All right, second, y'all are gonna get two resolutions tomorrow about reappointments on the Industrial Development Board. There are two, there are two individuals in the committee, Elizabeth Ruppert, that served, I think, from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen. They're up for reappointment, and it's up to y'all whether y'all wanna reappoint them or not. And I've got attorney for the Industrial Development Board here, Ms. Rigno, if y'all have any questions about board appointment process, y'all have to knock it forward. And I think they're asking that y'all just reappoint these two people for six more years.
Yeah, of course. Can you repeat those names again? But go ahead, repeat.
Ed McCurdy and Elizabeth Ruppert. Go ahead.
He's been on this board?
They have been, for six years. Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding.
That's why I'm saying that, right?
If there's some problem, you have to move forward, Senator Jones. All right, Mr. Witter?
Yes. Um, that's it, really, which lie from me in a nutshell, but I'm sure y'all have other questions, separate by way. Yes, the one we requested is not back yet. Y'all know.
Well.
I looked at the one, an email.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was, I looked at it from a formal opinion.
Hello, hello, Witter, Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, so the one that I'm talking about is the one that we've been waiting on concerning, um, the oil lease, and it, it is back. Uh, and I don't know if you have a copy or not, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood, I don't know if she took it upon herself to send it or if she was assigned to do it, but anyway, she did it and she got a quick, quick, quick response concerning, uh, the oil lease and the grass cutting and all that, and I, I thought you would have it so you can interpret it to us. But anyway, so there was a conversation being held between the AG's office and, and Councilwoman Youngblood, and the interpretation was given to her, I would ask you to interpret for the, for the panel, I read it clearly.
So the one I had, President Booey gave on me is an attorney general opinion from nineteen ninety-nine on the gas tax. No, I don't have the oil lease, we requested an oil lease, when I don't have that one back yet.
They, they don't have none, right?
Yes, that's the way.
Oil lease, well, okay, I see. But he had said, well, I'll tell you what, let me get you the full communication that John, John, yeah, Sydney. Let me get that, let me go.
Well, I think this, I think I have, this is the one that's.
Okay, you have the whole.
We do not have any municipal government capital improvement opinions directly on point. And then it goes on to interpret, gas tax.
Gas tax.
So does it apply, I can't tell you whether it applies to the oil lease money.
Same, okay.
Um, I don't think it does, but, and he was, he was nervous to say whether it or not, because he says, we don't have one on point. So this one just applies to gas tax, and it goes to talk about maintaining the grass if it's affecting the growth.
Yeah, affected the, you know, it can't do.
Yeah, so the question is, can we use oil lease money like we can use this gas tax money based on the AG's opinion? It's not clear.
Well, that, well, I had a little conversation, that's, that's not what I understood, but see the, anyway, okay, perhaps we shouldn't. Did you have the whole conversation?
I have an email from John to you, it's one period.
And there was something I replied to after this? Okay, I would, yeah, and I, and I tell you what, I'll call him too and get him into a meeting. I, I've just known him forever, and I think he's a good person, so that's why. I've slept since.
Well, and what does revotation mean? Our roads are falling, so we have a road.
Hello, Councilwoman Thomas?
I wanna ask the attorney this question, uh, I have, just like if you have something that is, um, I would use, I would use example as the, uh, the junkyard over there on Union, where there is a, a problem, where you have a school in the middle of something, uh, that it needs to be cleaned up. I think that is, that would follow upon the, wouldn't it follow upon the, like, uh, uh, public safety issue to the, the? Yes, when you have an issue, that's something that we are inheriting, and I am trying to, uh, school open that up.
Here's the thing, the school does not belong to us.
You can't use oil lease money or.
Yeah, it doesn't, you, you can't use oil lease money.
I wasn't talking about the school, I was talking about.
That junkyard.
I'm talking about, claiming, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about the school, I'm talking about the issue that's in my ward, uh, that I've been dealing with, that, uh, I have to find a way to, you know, because it's, it sits in the middle of, of, of a community. Where that, uh, it, it has to be cleaned up, it has to, grass and everything has to be cut.
So the grass in that area?
It is, it is, you need to take your ride over there, take a ride back over there.
You know, the statute says you can use oil lease money for capital improvement, it's gonna go to all the sage, brood, help safety and public welfare, and the citizens' safety, well, that's the, like, the regular area, that, well, that's why we get these AG's opinions. What does that exactly mean? And it seems like it's kind of a case by case basis.
Just the city, y'all let junkyard, that's the city.
The city owns that part, and that's why, and it's, it's the health and welfare in that community where it's sitting, we're in it. And it, um, this is where it's saved.
Yeah, okay, it all, all by now.
And I need, um.
What all needs to be, grass cleaned up?
It, it needs to, you need to take a ride and you'll see exactly why I, I speak about this. Uh, school start always the.
Six.
Seven.
And I would like to, uh, and you got people live in that community, I would like to get that, uh, taken care of.
So can it be cleaned up?
How much was it, Miss, Councilwoman?
To, to get it, uh, cut and cleaned out?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the contractor looked at like twenty-five hundred, it's a huge big area, and it has really over.
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
I give you towards my one, I, I give you something.
But can?
If we can use.
If you can use it.
Yes.
I think either brownfield is steady, it's steady on that.
Oh, we've got the brownfield study.
Exactly.
That's not done.
It's been done in the.
What I'm saying is we need to look at the brownfield study, see what they recommend for us to do.
I could tell you what they recommend, I have, I, it's in my ward and I have, I followed it up. It, I was just sitting there with Henry, they recommend for us to clean it up. They recommend for us to, uh, last year of twenty or eighteen, when Henry was standing there, I was asking him, could we get a grant? And we have, this council have to match whatever it costs to get that whole area cleaned up.
Did they tell you how much it would cost to clean it up?
Uh, no, I talked to Henry the other day, and, uh, I'm, uh, to get it really cleaned up, it's gonna cost some money. And he said that the council will have to match, uh, what he can get for a grant, you have to apply for a grant.
I remember they put out a bid to see who would be willing to clean it up at what cost.
Was, okay, uh, can we get a copy of that brownfield study?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, can we get a copy of this one?
It's a board.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Mr. President, um, there is this gentleman that was, that does brownfield, he does a lot of brownfield work. He's been here, Dr. Southland, he's from Louisiana, and he has done a lot of brownfield. Did you talk to Major, Councilwoman Benjamin, when you were doing your brownfield study, Dr. Southland?
I, I talked to the lady in Georgia.
Camille?
Yeah, I talked to her.
Okay, well, we, let's, we, let's help Councilwoman Thomas, 'cause I think that we can get the people here that may be able to help her get some money for the brownfields. Some brownfield honey. Um, AG, but there's this gentleman, and he taught, this Councilwoman, while he's still here, he taught us in Delta. And he, they, that's what he does, he goes around helping impoverished places get brownfield money. And I had forgotten all about that, but they did that, that study a while back. And, but anyway, um, so we'll have to see. I know this, I know, I know this is real frustrating for you, it's frustrating.
Well, it's not frustrating for me, it's, it's not about frustrating for me, it's what's entitled, need to be done. Talking about, I've been talking about it for, since twenty seventeen. And we didn't did the study, we got the proof back in twenty eighteen from the, from them going in there. And, um, we keep, uh, we keep doing it, we keep talking about it. But I would like to move forward because it's important to that community over there in that neighborhood.
I, I, I understand that we need to get it cleaned up and get it where it's not dangerous for the children, I certainly understand.
And also, it's not healthy, another thing, it's for the people that lives, you let people live right in the middle of that.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Um, and, and I, I, I wanted to help you with getting it cleaned up, the initial, like, the first phase or whatever cleaned up. But it's going to, to get, to get the total brownfield remediation, all that stuff done, is, takes a lot of time, and it's real, real, real extensive and real, real expensive. But to get the first phase done would, would help, that would help you. But, but then in the meantime, we could be looking at getting some help for you to get the full money done, the whole thing done. But I will help you, I've told you that I will be glad to help you get the, you know, the initial thing done. How much would it take to get the initial cleanup done?
Right now, um, I'm looking at it right now, at least try to get that junk, try to get it like I had before. Clean it down to the level of the ground, right now you're just, you're just vague, you're just.
Sure, I understand.
It's out of control.
Right, how, about how much dollar wise do you think?
Well, I already had a guy, well, I had a contractor, he looked at it and he said that, that he would go in there and clean the whole entire, clean it up, the whole entire junkyard, and, um, even not some of those, uh, some other structures out there, so we can kind of like make it a little decent.
Councilwoman?
I did it, I said it one time.
Twenty-five hundred.
I missed.
Twenty-five hundred.
How many?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred. All right, all right.
I, I, that's, that's not why I had any hand, I just wanted to respond to her because she said it one time.
Susan, I, Councilwoman Youngblood, I don't know if he answered you back on this right here or not. Uh, and you let us know if you did, because you, you started your email saying we have a unique situation, expenditures of all these funds over capital, uh, equipment and expenditures, and you went on into your email. And then he wrote you back as the attorney has said, we do not have any municipal government, government capital improvement opinions directly on point, I have attached our opinion, uh, concerning, and I'm gonna give them. It says this, the office stated in the marketing opinion that four cent gas tax proceeds may be used to pay for mowing of shoulders if such mowing is part of a rehabilitation or restoration of paved road. He gives you references and he goes on to tell you what cannot be used. You came back to say to him, and you let us know if he replied to you individually or not, you said, um, John, the upshot of this is that we can use oil lease to pay for protection of roads, sidewalks, and capital property, not to do regular, uh, maintenance mowing. For instance, where grass lines and other vegetation have grown and threaten roads, sidewalks, and overgrowth of trees, and lines threaten buildings, sidewalks, uh, guy wires, lines, and pose a threat to the structure and safety of the capital. We may use oil lease. Did he respond to you as you were trying to interpret what he was telling you? Did he, did he respond back to you on that?
You know, I don't think he did, we had a brief conversation, but I hesitate to quote that because I, I think that I know what the intent, I, I think that the, I think the intention of his sending that to me was to say that oil lease and gas, and, and gas, oil tax, oil lease money and the gas tax money have virtually the same rules and the same intent of, for expenditures. But he was just being sure to say, you know, this isn't oil lease, it's gas tax, and that's the reason he sent it. He didn't just say, no, we don't have one, he said, but we're doing, you know, that's why I want to create it like that.
So we do have a league, uh, a league opinion, and then you have this, and I was wondering if he said to you, well, yes, Susan, that's what I'm saying, or no, Susan, that's not what I'm saying, he didn't reply to that part.
No, so, um, I, no, that thing was to court, no, you're right, you're right, that was to court.
I think Ms. Youngblood's interpretation, I think is the same, I'm not saying you can't, I'm just saying, I'm not hundred percent going for it based on this, because it's a different statute, but he is saying there's two ones, but it's a different statute, because he's referring to the gas tax versus oil, so I'm not saying you can't use it, I'm just saying, I'm not hundred percent.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that would be a, probably a good persuasive thing to, to, to say for, for the decision making people, yeah, but, but. I didn't see the league opinion.
I think it is.
Okay, well, I think there you go, so, but anyway.
And if y'all send me the leaves, all right, I'll be on.
You have that, Councilwoman Thomas, you still have that, asking the league gave you that? You still have a copy of it? Well, this is in your email.
I think, uh, I might have.
All right, you have a question for me?
One next one, it's very quick. Attorney Jones, I did have one thing, um, my drain covers, you know, the twenty-four thousand dollars worth of drain covers?
So I think, I like how we did, we're building, if you hire somebody, not buy them separately, but hire somebody to get them and put them in, some of that, I think we can use it, uh, but.
It's a couple in store.
Yes, I think, I think we can, um, I'm waiting on an email back, but my interpretation of the law is we can.
Sorry, you're wrong, this is, oh, we've done.
Yes, let me call you back tomorrow, see if I get a response. But yeah, I think if they all, if they do it together, like with the installing air conditioner, the labor, everything together, then I think we can.
Because I made a promise to some of the citizens who would regret complaints about sixty-four missing drain covers that I had just made, so I'll leave you, um, we have prayed over, we prayed, we paid up, stepped out, and thank God.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm gonna.
And so we need to get the cover.
I'm gonna call you tomorrow.
This is, this is where I want to spend my oil lease money, because I gave you this beginning of last year, I gave you, I told you that this will be my cover for this year for my oil lease money, and the same here, now I got it, I have two hundred dollars left. But, uh, that's where I want to spend it.
Yeah, I'm gonna call you back tomorrow.
Okay, if you all help me with.
I think, I think this is all over the city where people have taken the covers on the street, and they have been replaced with concrete blocks, which is so ugly. I think we need to find out who made those covers and it was caused.
Cause.
And let's go ahead and, go ahead and. You think corporate made?
That, that's who gave me the quote, uh, for the sixty-four more three. That's the only way I can get a photo.
I think I let those concrete blocks there where they are.
But mine's a blanket, I don't know. But mine's a blanket, I don't know why, but um, couple that we got there, it's broken. Yeah, it's, it's three hundred and seventy-five.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Let's save them.
Councilwoman Thomas.
We don't have.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yeah, I'm waiting on Attorney.
I'm ready.
Okay, Attorney Woody, I have two ordinance I would like to talk about that, uh, and I, I just, the reason why I, I talk about ordinance because, um, it's been in the city, they are city ordinance. And uh, when we, um, uh, Councilman Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not, um, I just want you to be on a direct path at where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Um, we have uh, ordinance uh, for different things, uh, when we have people come before the council, uh, they do the proper steps. But, and I'm kinda confused and I wanna know where we're going with this, cause in the past I, I have, I've been confronted. I have been confronted about someone that we voted down with, with, with an ordinance, with, with trying to do something in my area. And I just wanna know that, um, if the ordinance requires of us to follow the steps of when we, uh, when we wanna bring something into the city limit, we have ordinance saying that you can't uh, bring, uh, you have a vacant lot and you wanna bring something, move something into the city on, on a tractor trailer, truck or something. If that lot wasn't already paved or already structured, you, you have to come before the, the council or you have to come before the licensed person or you have to come before. Do we have anyone that, uh, with all these different boards we have, do we have someone on like on the commission of board that decides if, uh, if this bit, if someone wants to create a place of business, uh?
The zoning board.
Okay, the zoning board, okay. And then after they go to the, the zoning board, uh, what's the next step?
Uh, I think the zoning board from on the state that's gonna come before the council to uh, get permission to move forward.
Okay, and this is where we at, this is where I'm at. Uh, we have a citizen that came before us back here, I think it was, was it twenty seventeen? It was twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. Uh, they went upstairs to the license, at the time we have a new license person now. But they came before, they stood before us, uh, uh, the new, the council members. And uh, we had an ordinance in place required of you, when you, you can't do what you can do and what you can't do. And uh, he wasn't able because we, you know, we followed the ordinance. But then we have other people that, uh, they did the same opposite thing. And uh, they wanna know how, how could that be done? And it never was brought before the council, it never was. So I told him, you can't blame the council, you can't blame the, the body for what someone else had made a move on doing. So my thing is this here is in the near future and I just wanna correct this because I, I felt kinda bad too. I was in, in the middle of Hard Rock, in the man. He said, how can the council, how can y'all body vote me down? And someone did the same thing I did. And I said, it wasn't, it wasn't our decision, it wasn't our decision. So I just wanted in the past that we, if we have ordinance in place, I would like for, you know, I don't care if it's the primary head or whoever, we need to be, uh, recognize what the city is saying, what ordinance have. And as council, I think it's disrespectful as this body is sitting up here that, uh, things happen and we don't feel part, we don't know and then we get blamed for it. We don't know, we're not aware of it, uh, to the, to everything, instruction in place.
Could you be a little more specific?
Okay, I use it, yes, sir, I would use it like this. Uh, this in Miss, Miss Youngblood war, when it happened, uh, it was, it was a vacant land. You know, no pavement, no nothing. And over, all overnight, all of certain, you see one of those little houses, tiny little houses. What the gentleman was trying to bring the same way. But we told him, it was an ordinance in place that he couldn't. And the house was blocked in and all of a sudden, all the structures start, you had to start putting your, your foundation down, your, your plumbing, your, your water, your, your layout, you had to push and run. And all of a sudden you start putting the, bricking up round, uh, the bottom of the little tiny house. And it also become a business. It became a business. And he was saying, well, how, how could that person do? And you voted me down, you voted me, you said we couldn't do.
What's this guy, what's this, Russell Dendron here or what's other business here?
Can I just ask a specific question, cause we, we just, okay, I, I know you like to get to the point, so can we get to the point? Are we talking about the highway to heaven, the car lot?
Yes.
And the.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying.
And, and the gentleman that came here that wanted to, uh,
Yeah, that's what I'm, and everybody was up here.
The guy that wanted to put his laborers in there so that his laborers could live in your war. Is this what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Everybody know what I'm talking about.
Okay. I don't think I have the feedback here, everybody's confused. Do you happen to have a copy of the ordinance with you?
Uh, you can see it on uh, medical dot com.
Well, I have, I, I remember the guy coming before us. And I know that there's been some, let's just say confusion about, yes, the, the car lot and, and thing. Um, it, it did go up, things, things did happen quickly, but, um, I, I seem to remember that when the guy came up and, and I was very adamant about our not doing, you know, tiny homes, cause he wanted to put a lot of little homes on, on one thing, but, and we, we voted against that. But I believe we talked about that for habitation for people living in them, but did we stay for businesses? Because there are a lot of these small, you know, businesses being run, some of them even out of port of businesses that they have long overstayed their temporary quarters that I keep meaning to bring that up, um, even along the main drag. But do you know what the ordinance says?
What the ordinance did say that you could not, uh, if, if it's not paved, it wasn't paved, that whole lot, that whole property, I think it was never paved. It was all green grass, the ordinance says.
Uh, yeah, I just did not.
Just look at it. Anything else before we move on to Councilwoman?
Yes.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
Yes, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Now, this is concerning before you go to your next topic, Councilwoman. This is still on the, uh, the little houses. I, so, uh, if we call them little houses, trailers, whatever we wanna call them. Those people, uh, came before us, remember Councilwoman Youngblood, they ca, I have one, uh, in my ward. Jeffrey Strong came before the council to be approved or not approved, the council approved it. Uh, there is one on the corner of Broad and, um, First Avenue, if I'm not mistaken. That young man came to, uh, the council, he came before the council. Um, the highway to heaven, car lot, I don't know, I don't remember anyone from that place coming to, um, the council for approval, and this is a city person. And so, that works all the departments, which means you know all the things, and you know all the rules. And so I don't remember that coming before the council. And you're saying, the, you mentioned Councilwoman in the ordinance, it is supposed to be cemented down.
Yes, it was.
Uh, all those kinds of things. And then I remember you telling me that it wasn't and then you looked up it before council, meaning it was. Uh, and that seems like circumventing something, in my opinion. It seems like somebody is circumventing these rules and all this stuff. And that is my opinion, okay, and not a fact for the record, that's my opinion, uh, that somebody is circumventing. And so, uh, those ones that you see around, uh, that we know about, they came to council for approval, uh, to get approval from the council.
And, and this is what I'm saying, you know.
I think, I mean, Kahala was bank also, but I don't know where.
Yes, sir, came before the council.
And, and, and that's why I was saying, you know, when you, when you turn someone else down and somebody else goes out, and we have an ordinance. And that's why I try to, I, I tell people before we do things, anybody, any citizen that's tired to go and look on another. Yes, and you will find out what you can do before you do this. You, you will know exactly. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for me because I don't, I didn't like getting beat down. I didn't like being, uh, saying that I am.
Like returning that out.
Yes, and I didn't like being, uh, being, saying, uh, we are being shady up here, cause we are not being shady, we are not doing favors. I, I'm according to the way the ordinance says what we're supposed to do and I try, we try to stick with that.
What about Councilwoman, um, Thomas, like, Councilwoman, before I have a call?
I was just gonna, I said the same thing, Councilwoman, you said that there, there have been those that came to us asking for permission, we have a grant, and there are those to help. And uh, it's not just that on that highway, there are others, generally one right now, I know for a fact people living there. And they, they swear they're down, they just only go in there for entertainment.
On millennial.
Well, it's there, but you know what? We got so many ordinance on the books.
For some.
But the people don't believe in us because we don't enforce them.
That's right.
I guarantee you, if we start, I just got it. We're wasting our time having people pick up power because then two or three days it's gonna be right back out there. We need somebody in this city that's gonna enforce the ordinance on the books. And, and, and until we start enforcing these laws that we got on the book, ain't nothing gonna change. People do what they want.
Councilwoman, uh, Thomas.
Yeah, my last one.
Excuse me, can I, one more, before we get to that, I, I, before we go to, to another subject. Um, uh, what it does when somebody fails to come before the council, it cheats the people who live out there out of the opportunity before having their say about their, their, about the, um, conditions they're going to live in, about, um, how the communities want to stay. We, you know, we're supposed to, we are, are the body politic that listens to the people and sets the standard supposedly for how our communities will live. And we are, and, and now there's, there are several things we have control over anyway because of the state of the city. But when people circumvent the process, that's why I asked you about what the ordinance actually said.
That's what the ordinance said.
Mm-hmm, and, uh, but it cheats the, the residents, and, and this is on the major thoroughfare. But it cheats the residents out of having their say about the standards of the, of the community.
And that's what I was saying.
Right, right.
Councilwoman Jackson, for what?
Isn't that on the subject, you said, last thing?
So, my next ordinance is, uh, you know, we talked about this in twenty, twenty eighteen, we were talking about, uh, you know, about our citizens with their property. Uh, I did a little, you know me, I'm a little pro when I do a little research. Uh, I asked Attorney Woody to, uh, give me the, the exact ordinance about our, uh, our tenants, people that have. We have people everywhere, out of states, we have people in the cities, and we have so many people own property in this city that don't keep their property up. You go from street to street, you see where the grass then grow up and cover up the house. You, you see where they're paying taxes. You, you, you see they're paying taxes, but they're not coming and doing what they, they should be doing. So I had Woody to, I'm, me as, as this councilperson, I started doing this on my own in my ward. And I went to the Dallas County Courthouse and I got this, uh, this is a map of where you could put in whatever address on this map that you have a problem with someone that needs to get their, their property cleaned up, it would give you who's the owner. It would give you, uh, the address where you, and I also had, uh, this typed up in a letter that so that I can kinda get my maiden, well, cause I have a bunch of them that, it, it just grassed and covered the house if you can't see it. Well, you could send the, the ordinance of, of it that require you in, uh, out in ten days for that person to try to get their property cleaned up. And, um, I just want people to know that, uh, the body of the council, right, we don't have our secretary and we don't have, uh, we have to do what, when people, when our citizen constituent call you and say, uh, Mayor Joe need to come and, you need to get Mayor Joe to do something to our property, she need to get it cleaned up. So we take time to, to do what we can to do till we get someone to, to, uh, be back in the office to help us with getting this done. So I just wanna say, people be aware of, uh, with your property, you know you have this property uh, that needs to be cleaned up. Uh, I got chewed out. Uh, raccoons attacked a family on Cedar, their children was in the, in the yard playing. The mama raccoon must've got babies. And, uh, the, the landlord came and found me, he was calling City Hall, nobody, and so he finally got through to Ms. Wade. And, uh, Ms. Wade called me, told me that this man was very upset. And I was out in the community doing things and, uh, he found me, he came where I was. And he was, he was blowing steam and so had my, had Mr. Fitz there with me, he was like, he was gonna whip me. And I said, hold up, hold up, back up, back up now. We gonna get, we gonna take care of this problem. And he said, I'm just tired of y'all, council. I'm not here, you talk about it, you talk about it, you ain't doing, and I said, wait a minute, sir. That is, those are your tenants, but that property does not belongs to the city. But I said, I'm gonna work with you. He said, my tenant live next door to where someone got angry, it's just, it's ridiculous, I want me to talk about it. And somebody used it and started throwing garbage, there's so much garbage back there. And, um, the children were playing in the backyard and you know how the raccoon came out? He thought they was spending, was at his babies, cause it's a baby raccoon. And he started running at the children's town and attacked the children. And the, the parents called the tenant. And the tenant looked for me and said, this is my duty, I need to get it, get something done. So I did, I, we went over there, we tried to kinda like tighten up, but then we can't do it all. So this is the kinda stuff that, you know, the council have to, to deal with. So, so I'm gonna say that there are two ordinance that we need to, you know, really just focus on or trying to get our city back. Yeah.
So is David sample form letter, did you do a sample form letter?
Yeah, so, I, I was just talking to Ms. Thomas too. I think this was last week, I was in depositions with Graham, which I know Graham did it right, gave, printed that off for you too. And so, some of this property had already been actually abated, I think. So it's a little different than if it's new, we gotta declare a nuisance, give them notice, certain thing. But I, yeah, I, I'll send you what I sent her, it's an email, just kinda put out the steps.
Cause we're supposed to, we, um, we get after our ward meeting on last week on how to get on their website. And I would love to do it, but I don't wanna send out a letter that, um, may get us in trouble.
No, you, you don't.
But I want to notify them, I, I don't, I don't want to go through the whole abatement process, but knowing that you've done a sample letter, I don't mind going on the website and doing it. This is what I wanted to make you, uh, aware of, uh, before you leave. So I spoke to one of the deputy commissioners in the Department of Corrections. And this is, it's a reply to me. I said, generally, how much does the state pay for the custody of a offender in the county jail? Does the state pay anything for misdemeanor offenders that are required to be held for a certain time before being allowed to bond out? He said, the current, the state is currently paying one dollar and seventy-five cents per day for state payments. The legislative passed a bill to increase that amount beginning October this year. I think it's, it may be around two dollars and twenty-five cents per day. Not sure, the state does not pay for misdemeanor offenses. So I asked someone to look up, but I got to my calculator. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year, which equates to a thousand forty-one dollars and sixty-six cent a month, which is thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cents a day for our sixteen bed. And the state pays felony offenders, felony, these are just misdemeanor cases. The state pays a dollar and seventy-five and the city pays thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, something's wrong with that picture. The state has way more money than the city itself, great budget than the city itself.
Probably the best thing to do, cause we got this Thursday and we asked a lot of these questions, it's probably for me to put it in writing to their attorney.
Want me to send you these numbers?
Well, I'm, I know. Well, I'm I know too. I'm not and I'm not saying this is a good or bad deal for y'all, I just got to let you know about it. But I think I should write it and put it in writing to them. And then maybe I should come to that executive in too and we can see if there's any more questions we have and follow on. But they may not tell us, but and so we've got to find out.
If I can be fifty dollars a day if I was with Captain Alicia River, I would go answer. And so I'm asking that we be about to pay the same thing, the dollars seventy-five cent a day.
I'm gonna sit down, I'm not gonna leave yet. You guys got a lot of questions.
Last question, approximately. Over time, salute.
Yeah, I talked to Ms. Wade, I talked to Ms. Wade about that. We're contacting the Department of Labor, the vacation, right, that's my homework, about what to do with that, yeah. So I'm looking into it.
Can we give you a list of um properties so that you can um you can start the abatement process? Because some of this it just has to make it, it just has to.
That's probably what you get, you know this, and we can do it in one meeting.
I was wondering what you're doing, buying them a court on Thursday. Probably get a A good if we look at that.
If we go ahead and start the legal process, whatever it is that we're supposed to be doing, I I I have some that this just don't have to make.
Yeah, identify the properties and sending the addresses.
And we obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you start the process.
What are you saying, we're just going to identify the violators?
No, 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 identify the property. In other words, identify the address of the property. Don't, don't identify, no.
I want to, um what I'm asking is to do what Attorney Wood used to do for us. Remember he used to submit to us, these are also with the bank.
Just give Wood an address.
Yeah, there's some addresses.
Also too, like I mentioned, uh the environment, of course, the talking, just a good. They are looking at starting on a Thursday.
That's a good thing. Now, that's one thing with the people, we need somebody to cite these people dumping this garbage once we identify them, get them into the violent court too. So I think we need access to Mr. Michael Gordon, who, to my understanding, had told us a part-time criminal force. So we need access to Mr. Gordon. So that we can start citing these people who are violating our our ordinances.
Should he give you a list?
No, we have to, we have to start.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna sit down.
Attorney Johnson, it was that these uh these certified rights citations. So he he can write citations while he's actually there.
Councilwoman.
I just want to ask a favor of the of the council. I have Ms. Jessica Taylor here, who's doing a special presentation for us. You know, she's coming in to do that and she's been there, been been waiting for about an hour now. I want to see, I know you got the fire chief process in the sense of next, do you mind if I go?
Oh, we have Mr. Greaves too about the landfill, but we'll bring him over first and then we'll let you listen.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank y'all for having me.
Thanks for coming.
So, she's from Texas, we've got, um we say we spoke in a lead training regarding the county. And they highly recommend that cities get involved with the work that she's doing. And so I gave a call and went to know if she could come and present to us.
Good evening, thank you guys for having me. Um my name is Jessica Taylor, I'm the CEO of Asmat, a grant consulting firm. We are headquartered out of Montgomery, but we also have an office in Atlanta. We provide full-service grant consulting. We divide it into three categories of services, grant research, grant procurement, and grant management. So we can provide grant research to identify opportunities that you can pursue for various initiatives. Or if you've already identified opportunities, we can skip right to grant procurement and that's putting a proposal together. Whether that's researching what the grantor may want to see, what needs to go into the proposal, all the way to submitting. And then if you need assistance with implementation on the backend, we can also perform grant management services. We can provide these things a la carte, hourly, or in various packages. That's on page fifteen and sixteen of the document that I just passed out. So we've worked with nonprofits, school systems, municipalities, even a few for-profit defense contractors. Our expertise is in proposal development. We're a team of thirteen, we all have various backgrounds and expertise. If it's an education grant, Evelyn's gonna be on it. You know, so it just depends on the subject matter for which team member will come in and help with the application. So I'd love to answer any questions you guys have about what we've done in the past and how we can maybe help you guys obtain grant funding.
Do you have cost in your services?
Yes, sir.
Are you on, are you on a percentage?
Yes, sir.
You ask the upfront?
Well, not necessarily upfront, but it's hourly or flat.
And how much is that?
So it depends on how many hours you reserve. Uh the documents I passed out, page fifteen, has the package pricing. So you can get, say, a federal grant, if you ordered that just a la carte off menu, it would be seventy-five hundred dollars. Or you could have us on contract hourly and that comes to benefit you all when you're doing multiple grants because we become more efficient with our time as we do more for you.
Is that money reversible back to us?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I say if we hire you to undertake a task of writing a grant for a specific purpose and and we pay you good costs and and we're not funding, do you reimburse us the money?
Oh, no, sir. Just like if you pay a lawyer, you got a court, if you lose, you still gotta pay that that lawyer. Uh we can say though, we've never had a client that we've worked with for more than twelve months that we haven't more than covered our costs. We've worked with several municipalities, Alabama, Georgia, a few randomly throughout the country, school systems as well. I we don't track our um outcomes based on what's your percentage of grants awarded. I don't like that metric because it might take us one hour to send out an application to a private funder and I don't want to not do that because I don't want to mess up my percentages. I like to say, how long have we worked with the client and how much, how much have we, how much have they paid us and how much have we brought together?
Over the very, the very, what city did you work with here?
The the very last one? Now, City of Prattville, City of Stockbridge. I brought some uh a one-year grant strategy from the City of Stockbridge. Don't forgive me, I don't remember the most recent award, but we've gotten CDVG awards, just about every, funding from every federal agency, that's listed here as well. Um ranging from, you know, for a municipality, I mean, they could be fifty, sixty thousand all the way up to multiple millions of dollars, it just depends on the community and the president we're applying for. They're all different.
Councilwoman Jackson, um sometimes in writing grants, you can write in the administrative costs. Do you all come across grants that you can write in the administrative costs into the grant itself?
Yes, ma'am, many, actually. And that's a separate service, so the proposal development's here. And there are very few that will allow you to recoup those costs, but it's very negligible. But the management cost you typically can't.
So you typically typically can do that part. And if we came up with grants or have grants that we would like to submit on a regular basis because they, the cycle goes around in a circle. Uh and we retain you, and I'm trying to find that amount, to retain you.
Do you see the out, there's outly, there's the package for proposal development?
I see quarterly implementations on a, of a, seventy-five hundred.
That's in straight hourly, if you're more comfortable with that. It depends on how many hours you reserve. So if you reserve at least three hundred hours, it's one twenty-five an hour. If you do a hundred hours, it's one thirty-five. And fifty is the minimum that we'll do, we can't really do much less time.
So are we totally basing on hours and not annually, you don't do that?
You can do annually, you can set a budget cap and say up to this and then we'll bill against hourly and give you a monthly accounting. But you're gonna maybe come out there and look at some of the packages. Some people want to know the predetermined amount per month, that's why we have that package. And some of them are comfortable with hourly, but we give you monthly updates as to where we are or whatever amount you said.
Councilwoman Jackson. When when I spoke with you, you gave at the league conference, you gave a presentation where you talked about several of the funding sources that you all have been from private, private sector all the way to the public sector. So if you could talk a little bit about that, and then more recently, when I called you and asked you to present, you told me that you're currently working with the city and your goal for this city was one point five million dollars and you've already surpassed that at over sixty.
That was actually a cohort of thirty nonprofits that are involved in workforce-related services. And so we were brought on and had a goal of raising one point two million by the end of this year, but we've already converted six million with another seven million pending. So, you know, it depends on the client. If it's a small nonprofit, they're not going for the big million-dollar grants. But if it's it's a consortium of folks all around the state, you know, we can do that for nature funding.
And I spoke to someone, your background, you actually work with the state, you're an attorney, licensed.
I'm an attorney by trade, I really didn't practice very much. I started this business when I was in law school. Um I got started writing grants in Governor Bob Riley's Office of Faith-Based and Community Initiatives. We had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Health and Human Services to train nonprofits and faith-based organizations on capacity building. And every single time, grant writing was at the top of what they wanted to be trained on. So I started doing that on the side when I was in law school and it's just grown into this business ever since. So, you know, we have a range of clients, you name it, we've sort of been involved in a little bit of everything, infrastructure.
Your page, actually, so show us some of the the grants that you've worked with and been funding.
Yes. I don't think I mentioned, over fifty million in funding over the last ten years for a little over a hundred clients. Those materials are not as up to date as our awards are, they come in weekly. We've served a hundred clients.
Councilwoman, y'all good? Thank you. So do you all do the grants management and um the grants writing and management? Do you all do any capacity building and community building and collaboration building too?
Well, really, what we're doing when we put a proposal together is just that. I mean, I tell people it's like developing a business plan, it's not a simple document. So if your entity is not healthy, it's gonna show on that grant. So as we put the various documents together, that really is helping sort of build capacity.
Right, we we're in dire need of that, we're in dire need of, dire need of collaboration.
Well, if you're working hourly, we can do, you know, as much or as little as we feel comfortable doing. We try to stay in our lane of proposal development, but as I said, the entity needs to show well on paper. So, you know, the budgets need to be presented a different way, we can help you with that. We've got folks who have extensive experience in budgeting. I'm probably the least credentialed person on the team. So I'll I'll email you guys a copy of this and you can see, everybody's spread out across the country, four here in Alabama, but we, because we do mostly writing, we can do it from anywhere.
The reason I asked her to come was because, you know, the league bring the best in the practice to the conventions and the conference for us to talk to, for us to collaborate. And that was one of the things that they said, talk to this young lady. I had a a DECA, a DECA grant audit on last week and speaking to a DECA, I asked her, you know, throughout your name, and it's like, oh, Jessica, she's great. We're gonna have a neighborhood revitalization grant coming up. Tell her that it's coming and I was like, yes. And so that's when I sent you the text, um because in Exeter, they've done neighborhood revitalization grants before and she said, yes. And I know some of the things that, public safety grants that you presented at the conference. And stating that you you've got other cities, fire trucks and, you know, equipment and things that they need. You know, we we said at one point, I heard at one point, hadn't come lately, that we need another fire truck of a million dollars going to get someone to write a grant. You know, that could offset some of that cost, so eliminate altogether. So I just want to bring that as a possible solution as we're looking at our budget process. Uh maybe we can fund this amounting and then look to obtain grants that could, to keep, decrease the amount we pay out.
Councilman Shaw?
Still, I still would like to know, what was the last grant that your company wrote? And for what amount and for what purpose?
The last one we submitted was today. It was for Merryweather County School in Georgia. I did not submit it or write it, I believe it was one point two million. And it was for a at-risk programming. I'm sorry. It was submitted today. The most recent was Department of Labor, it was for four million, it was not for a city. And I'm trying to remember our most recent municipal award and I believe it was City of Prattville, a CDVG, seven hundred and fifty thousand. But I apologize, we submit about seven a week.
Seventeen?
Yes. No, it isn't.
Seven hundred thousand?
Yes.
And you've been in business since two thousand and ten?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have thirty members staff?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
One day maybe.
Thirteen members staff, okay. And everyone is certified in different areas.
There's PhDs, there's JDs, there's no credential that a grant writer has to have, but they're all extremely experienced.
You said the total amount that you reported today is?
Right over fifty million today. That document you have, I believe, says thirty. Forty-five.
Eighty-eight months, two thousand and ten.
Needs to be updated, it's a few months old.
We're busy writing grants.
Also, we do other proposals, our own proposals, come second.
I understand completely.
Any other questions?
Thank you for taking your time to come out and present us, hopefully collaborate with you in some of that, like, can we ask?
Me as well, y'all email or call me if you have any questions.
Our next person is, is, is she? Mr. Williams, the land.
How are you doing today, council? Uh I'm here today as a council for funding for a new machine at landfill as well as funding for maybe a couple more employees out there at landfill also because we're, we're in dire need of employees and that machine. Um right now, we're operating with an excavator at landfill that's not made to do what it does and we're in the, on the verge of right now having to send that excavator off. And oh, that's gonna need some major work also, the whole bottom carriage left to fall off because we're using it to pack trash. And I've I've priced the excavator, I mean, the the machine we need and it's priced at a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is pretty good for other machines I've priced. And I priced a few other ones with Jim Wood at the auctioneer and those machines were a lot older, you know, and they're almost semi-nine years old and they're used. And we don't get warranty with those, you know, and, you know, they're a lot cheaper. But once again, you don't get a warranty. You get a nine-year-old, you know, and I have a guy here from Cowen that we will be purchasing the machine from and he'll feel better understand what the machine is, how much it costs, type of warranty we're gonna get on it, you know, the leasing agreement, uh how many years it'll take us to pay it off and, you know, better understand on that. And as far as I'm speaking about the employee situation at landfill, I've been at landfill ten years. When I first got to landfill, we had six people at landfill operating, doing a great job. Seven years, we hadn't had a problem. No write-ups, perfect, perfect record. We start, guys started dropping off, you know, one by one, one by one, they never were replacing. I kept complaining and kept complaining to my supervisor, which was Mr. Friday. I love him like like a father, but he was a real quiet type and never said anything about it. And, you know, it just kept going on and on, we'd lose a guy, never replace a guy. So finally, we were down to two guys. I mean, and it kept getting more and more serious, I mean. And for all those years, me and Marcus, you know, tried to hold it down with just two guys. And now I'm in a situation now where, you know, I have osteoporosis in my thigh and taking steroids shots in my thigh and I'm I'm not the guy I was ten years ago. And I just, I can't move like I used to. And I gotta get some help. I mean, and it's killing, it's killing, it killed me to get in and out of that machine. You know, I take pride in what I do. I don't care, my my father told me, I don't care if you pick up trash, you'll be the best trash picker up you will be. And that landfill does not look like I want it to look, you know. The grass needs to be cut, those holes need to be fixed, that road. I shouldn't have people coming to the landfill worrying about breaking a tire axle or something like that because the roads aren't done right. That landfill should look like a flower garden when you first pull in there, you know what I mean? When you pull up on that trash, it should look, it should be neat. I have a father with ADM because of household trash. I I should have guys up there being able to go through that trash, you know what I'm saying, being able to pull out the little trash I have in there. You know, but I don't, you know, you respect two guys, you respect a guy my size, get down out of the machine, go through a pack of trash, try to pull out household trash, get back up in the machine while I'm in the machine, sit there writing these tickets, do what I gotta do, hand the ticket I have to go into, you know, I mean, all that, that's one guy. I mean, I I can't do it by myself. I mean, that's a lot. I mean, I, I can't do it by myself. I mean, that's a lot.
Father of the council on, uh, Ben, uh, Mr. Williams, we can only appropriate the funding. It's gonna be up to the day-to-day operation for your employees. And also, we are looking at a deadline, August.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Uh, ADM will be back in August. And I'm just gonna be honest with the council. Even if we get the machine tomorrow, we're not gonna make that deadline, have that landfill covered, you know, before ADM gets back. We were already, uh, we already voted last time. We're not being covered. And, uh, he'll be back first week of August and we're gonna, we're gonna take another one. Because even if we get the machine tomorrow, we won't make it. It's just so much trash been brought in. You know, it looks neat, you know, I'm not gonna lie. It's neat, but it's not covered.
Counselor, you're good.
I wanna say something to you, Dave, and you said, you, you're not saying that you can't do the job, right?
Oh, I do.
You made reference to a guy your size cannot do certain things.
I mean, I can't, I can't do everything. I can't do everything by myself.
You're saying that you need more people to, to help you do that. Okay, and, um, we, we can't give you anyone.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make you aware.
No, this leads me to my next question because we can't give you anyone. We can only appropriate the funds for that. And we have appropriated funds to bring back workers.
Right.
Um, who have you complained to concerning?
Well, see, my supervisor was Mr. Friday.
I mean, lately, who have you complained? You said ADM is coming back in August.
Oh, well, I can play.
So, have you complained to personnel?
Well, yeah, I talked to the mayor. He's implemented in the budget, you know, for, for more employees at Landfield.
What is your process in your department for making those, uh, particular kinds of?
Well.
This is important.
Yeah.
Because you said ADM was your attorney in August.
Right.
So, who did you tell downstairs for what, and is there a written process that you make this complaint?
Yeah, my first complaint was to the chief of staff, which was at the time, Van Giver.
Okay.
And then he interned the mayor, though. So, you know, they wrote up a proposal about the machine in which the papers were given to them, you know, as far as how much the machine costs and everything like that. And then they interned, turned the papers into, I believe, one of you all, I guess, I don't know.
You know, it was long.
It went from there, you know, but according to what I understand, well, what I was told, that the mayor turned in the papers to the proper staff, you know, from what I understand, from them, if paperwork was turned in.
Okay, we're not staff is why I'm asking. I'm trying to see.
No, from what I understand, from my property, from the mayor's office.
Okay.
That everything was turned in to the council.
So, you filed a written complaint saying, "I don't have enough workforce and ADM will be back in August."
Oh, yeah, yeah. We've already been over the budget. Yeah, we went over the budget with the mayor's office informing that, you know, we don't have enough staff and our machine is down. We've been, we went over that. Yeah, we all went over that often, about our staff.
So, what you need the council to do is appropriate if somebody's working equipment.
Exactly, the equipment and, and staff.
We can possibly do that. Yeah, we already appropriated money for staff.
Okay, okay.
To return.
Right.
Uh, and the treasurer can tell me if your staff is in that sixty-eight. She can tell us if your staff is in that sixty-eight number or, or not. And, and we know that our sixty-eight are returns, okay, and we're trying to get your appropriation for the staff, but we can't give any people just that out.
Right, right.
You all had one individual in Landfield, I mean, Friday retired, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Friday retired and nobody played. I, I moved to his position and nobody else replaced him in my position.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, Moselle, I'm so glad. We've been friends a long time. Let me ask you this, okay. If, when you first started with the city, it was, first started out Larry at the Landfield. Was it you and Larry and how many other people?
It was me, Larry Friday, Roy Valdo, Kenny, uh, Marcus Thompson, uh, I forgot. I know his nickname. Guy he called, uh, it was a guy he called Dick, the biggest fella that worked at Fleet Macs. He was there. Some other fella that I had just met.
Okay, so it was a total of eight people?
Yeah, it was about seven. The other guy was Fleet Macs, back and forth.
I got you, okay. Seven people on the float.
Right.
Okay, so now there are how many?
Just me and Marcus.
You and Marcus. And you've got some health issues. You've amassed some health issues that through, over the years throughout this, okay. So, you and Marcus are doing the job of seven people in a float.
Yeah, we're doing everything. Well, we're not doing everything. We're, something.
You're doing the best you can.
Right.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I had that right, okay. And we have a trash compactor that's got, so you don't even have proper equipment to take it. And we have ADM writing down.
Right. And then we, we have, we have some funding at the Landfield that we can get rid of to make money. We have two trash packages back there that just sit there, just scrap metal. I mean, they're, they're probably never run again. The old boat man, it's, it's almost two hundred thousand fixed. I mean, it probably never running. If we purchase this machine, that's scrap metal. I mean, some parts on that, it can be, they can be sold to make money. The wheels are worth fifty grand by itself.
Moselle, I, I wanna ask you, did, did Larry ever tell you about talking to, to both the council and the mayor about getting a chipper so that, that the inert materials did not need to go in the landfill? Uh, when I say, so that lamps and leaves would not need to go in the landfill, we could ship them up for launch? And maybe, okay, well, we had, I, I know the, the, and sell it off. But anyway, it could be a whole little business for the city, but it, this is holding, but putting first things first. Ricky Shelby is willing to sell us very, very, very reasonably. And the council's already agreed the first, just an industrial wood chipper. You know who Ricky Shelby is, okay? And, um, we can, instead of putting the lamps that have no business going into a landfill anyway and leaves and all that stuff.
But we're CND, so actually, that's the only that we're supposed to be actually taking that brush and stuff like that.
Okay, well, instead of putting it in landfills, most of it, we can ship it up and launch it and, and wind up selling it and, you know, making money and it can do itself. So, we're looking at maybe getting that next week.
Okay.
Um, so, um, sorry that you and Larry didn't have the opportunity to talk about it, but it looks like that may happen pretty quickly, so we'll be, um, we'll, we'll talk about that later. I'm, I'm not in favor of having big, you know, broadcast discussions at the meetings when we don't really need to. And then presenting it in front of, talk about the minute issue. So, we'll be having one of those, we'll be having meetings about this.
You mentioned, uh, having to get out and look at the household garbage. What, how, how much house full garbage actually makes?
We're getting quite, see, this is the situation. When the bone trucks pick up the trash, see, what, what people in the community are doing, they're dropping trash out there, dropping the trees and stuff on top of the trash. But those guys pick it up, they don't see the household trash.
Right, right.
You know, because we don't have code enforcement. They don't, they're not getting out there checking it out. And I really applaud what you said earlier. We're not enforcing that.
Right.
If you, if you, if you, if you find those folks that, "We're not picking this stuff up until you straighten this out." You know what I'm saying? It's gonna sit there, you know, and.
You make a good point, thank you.
And I really applaud. I really appreciate that, you know, because if we cut that down, we wouldn't have a problem. But, but it's coming, it's, it's been like that for years.
Right.
But we had guys.
And they need citizens to hide their trash in the, in the yard garbage by not having code enforcement out there and doing their job.
Yeah, but you know.
Which makes your job hell.
We were able to stay in compliance because we had two guys out there at all times, you know, and they were able to get most of it out. And the stuff they didn't get out, we were constantly covering, so it always stayed covered.
Right, right.
But we got this young fellow now, he's straight out of college, twenty-three years old, and I swear he has a point. I promise. The fellow sits there, he'll dig up a foot of dirt with his foot. I promise he will. I'll probably take a ruler, stick it out there without substances. He has a problem. I promise.
We need to use those April certified.
First, they knock on the door, "Ma'am, do you have a garbage receiver?" "Yes, I do. Move on." "Ma'am, do you have a garbage receiver?" "No, I don't. I'm gonna cite you. You got one week to get your garbage receiver." There's a law that's gonna stop this trash being at the middle of garbage. We need that force. We need to do more than what we're doing. What we're doing is talking about. We need to do some things.
Get this firefighter, so South County.
To address what you just said, it's not the ones with the, it's, it's the apartment complexes that have the giant garbage cans, you know, full and the people are coming out there in the, in those neighborhoods and just throwing it on the side, you know, and where the bushes are and stuff like that outside of the roads. You know, it's those areas there, you know, because some of those wars, you know, that have, where they have cans at, they're doing a pretty good job. It's just those areas where they have the big giant garbage cans at and they get over full and, you know what I'm saying? And they don't have anywhere to throw it. They just look for the first area that looks like a spot and that's where they throw it.
But now, which one do we have at Landfield, um, budget this way, do you know?
I'm trying, five of that, yeah.
Well, I have to tell everyone, Kyle, you know.
You can bring them up.
And while you're looking at it. Break the numbers down.
How much personnel is involved in the current budget? Is it just, just, just him and Mr. Friday?
Just two. Because his people were, your people are long down.
Yeah, see, what we used to do in the past, our staff there from Public Works, they were on Public Works payroll. And Public Works was just, those four guys stayed at the Landfield, but they were always on Public Works payroll.
I got you.
Oh, well, they're in the number. We have three. That's, um, the landfill attendant, the supervisor, which position you're currently in.
Yeah.
And then the driver operated the, the one, the position you previously occupied. That's how.
So, is it one or two you got?
Three.
It's just two of them.
Okay, so there's money for an additional person to persuade?
Yes, yes, sir.
And everybody?
No, that means all of them are in there because he said four of them came from Public Works and we, we, um, we said put that, that's in the sixty-eight. So, the four that came from Public Works is in the sixty-eight number.
Right.
So, it's enough for at least six, I think, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have we voted to re-estate the sixty-eight workers? Do we still have to move to that?
Okay.
Okay, let's, I don't think, okay?
How are y'all doing? It's great. I'm calling from Cowen Equipment. Met y'all several months ago. We've talked about the Landfield compactor. Since then, some things have changed. Y'all, down the side, that was more what y'all wanted to do. In the meantime, we rented, uh, Moselle a bulldozer to do the same job. And so that's the actual tractor we have quoted you. We quoted almost two months ago, so I apologize. I hope everybody's got copies of that. Um, there was, it's sent out, it was an actual tractor that he did have on rent. It was a new two thousand nineteen Case eight fifty W when he got it. I think it had maybe a hundred hours on it when he got it. So, it is a current model, has the remaining factory warranty left on it. And, uh, we actually went back. Y'all did pay a, I believe it was a month or week, a couple of weeks rent on it. I gave you credit for that as an updated proposal. And then we also quoted in December, like we did on the Landfield compactor, a, um, a seven-year lease on it with a dollar buyout, uh, like we did with the other. And so, uh, I can, I apologize. I've been out for a week, just got back and called me yesterday. So, I was playing catch-up today, so I apologize on exactly what we're getting to, what everybody's seen, had seen on this. But I'd be glad to, uh, email that if everybody needs it.
Apologies and favors for the seven years.
It's, uh, eighteen seventy-nine ninety-two.
So, we have a year?
Sir?
A year, why?
Monthly lease payment. Annual lease payment is twenty-two, one eighty-four, eighty-nine. If you want to do annual.
Counselor, does that go with a maintenance package? You don't have the maintenance on the piece of equipment?
It does not include maintenance. It does have warranty, the factory, what's left on the factory warranty, which it was, but I wrote fleet earlier this year, so it had the remaining warranty on it. Uh, we can do something on maintenance line, but it's not included in this.
Where's the maintenance run with that? Just all part, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but you could deposit.
How many hours a month are you gonna put on the tractor, you think?
Uh, it's gonna run every day. Six, seven hours, eight hours a day.
I would say maintenance, uh, come down and change, do all the oil changes and everything. You can do it on equal, equal monthly payments. As where I live, with a lot of my customers, they're gonna say five to seven hundred dollars a month. I mean, that may be high, but I'm, I'm guessing.
Better hide than to come in.
Yeah.
Way, while you're doing it.
Yeah, I'd rather be high, but, and that would equal it out. Your bigger services cost a lot more, that'd be equal. Or, or we can do it on the service that you have been.
Right, you have a flat rate, so you win some, you lose some.
Well, we just, we take it all, look them together and then, and then spread it out on equal monthly.
Right, so it's.
So, it's an average, correct, yes, sir.
Like a salary. Sometimes you work all day, sometimes you work a couple of hours. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose.
Well, some people like the equal monthly payments.
Right.
And so your services depend on, different hours require different markets to be serviced, right?
Okay.
Eighteen seventy-nine per month or either twenty-two thousand, one eighty-four per year is what the lease payment is. And he asked about the committee maintenance, uh, agreement, it would be separate.
Eighteen hundred a month.
Eighteen seventy-nine, eighteen hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Right.
Yeah, correct. That's what it is.
I apologize.
That'd be a lot of our price range. So, the eighteen seventy-nine plus the five to seven hundred, because you've got this proposal on what the maintenance package would be on that side, just give it to us via email as soon as you can. That way, you know, keep you up and running, Moselle. If we go this direction, you're gonna have to worry about getting maintenance on if these guys who know how to work on this stuff can come out there and do it more efficiently. They're trying to get that back and forth considering we have nobody to work on these things for the city, so.
It's funny, are you all doing the city?
And the reason I ask that because you've all been all the full of our markets.
Uh, first question, who, who's doing the financing?
It is, uh, National Cooperative Leasing. It's a governmental leasing.
Government, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Um, this is their, they do governmental leases for us with a lot of, uh, municipalities. And so this is their deal. This is actually the form that we can be filled out for them. So, it would be through them and it is a governmental, uh, lease.
Okay.
They just do that with, and so I can email all that as well.
Okay. Yeah, yes, I can.
You can just give us an answer tomorrow.
Tomorrow or is the where the money can come from before, okay. I'm talking about almost twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
With the optical word, ten.
Would you also contact Mr. Warren and see if he can help with that? No. From, um, USC. Did you ever try with?
Yes, everybody. It's getting to me, maybe, or something.
Can we get out?
Still the one back, the bad one. Same car, I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Send it to me, just make sure I get it timely, fashion.
Yes.
Counselor, will you give us a little bit more time to give you a response?
Can I work from my, my office on the balcony?
Oh, you can just shoot me a link. That'd be easier. Just shoot me a link. It's a thing that gives the maintenance package that really helps us out maintaining. I've, well, that's mine. I mean, I've, I've, I've tried to hold the tractor for a while. We did actually put it on rent last week. I can swap it out with another one. I had it on hold. This, like I said, we quoted it, almost, we quoted it, uh, May the thirtieth is when I actually quoted it, back when y'all had it on rent. And, you know, I understand that, not a problem, so. Well, I'm, I'm, I'll get that same tractor because I'm giving you credit for the rent y'all paid on it already as well, so.
So, Mr. Williams, can you give me, uh, see what we're gonna vote for, move forward?
Give you a text with the account.
The cap number there, so what do you put in on the center, Jim, there?
There's no brand.
Pending, right.
I mean, we can take.
I'm just joking, just.
We'll, we'll take care of it for the remaining time and then put it in the upcoming.
That's a, let me joke too.
So, appreciate the product. It's a little.
So, Mr. Williams, um, Mr. Williams, as you can see, we're working on the equipment and you can, uh, go to, uh, personnel and, and work on getting your, um, employees because they're faithful.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll move forward.
Don't push too hard, Moselle. You'll have to, don't push too hard here. Never know what repercussions.
Just say, "Hey, the money, the money's in the budget. Can I have my employees back?"
That's all we do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir. Appreciate you basing a wake-up on this day. Yes, sir.
Hey.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Moselle. Counselor.
So, guys, um, I wanted to just say this one last thing about, um, Ms. Taylor's presentation. Um, I wanted to, us to consider in the upcoming, um, budget year, the one-year packaging, um, for the sixty thousand dollars. And I know, we're saying sixty thousand dollars, that's a whole lot of money, um, what it includes. Uh, I wanted to give you just the top things that it includes, with twenty-four private applications. That's to, um, the cap office and just real list of the general means. That's to the, uh, officers and the DC and body generals and law courts and parties and, um, Ronald McDonald House and chair, all those. Uh, eight public app, application, those are tied federal, um, states and local, um, applicants. And so I wanted us to consider that because as I, I talked to my company, uh, possibly sure over here, if we got one break, if we were able to get just that public safety grant for the fire truck, if we got half of the million dollars that they stated the need to pay for their fire truck, we more than, um, pay for the sixty thousand dollars for their services. And we have some employees that own boots, um, and maybe be found in positions that'll make a good that much. Just under that much, and we're not getting any services. just under that much, and we're not getting any services.
So if we spend sixty, we make millions?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes good sense to me, doesn't it?
And so I'm asking you all to consider that in this upcoming year's budget, because I, I really believe, I didn't, I didn't hear off the street, I heard at the league conference, and I really believe that, um, you know, that they can make a difference, the league believes in them, I talked to a death that they know. Um, and the first thing they told me, tell them that our revitalization, management revitalization grants come next.
I, I really understand your concept of what I would like, what I would hope. That going into the new budget year, we're gonna consider, consider, let's bring some issues, so that she can immediately work on, so that, uh, this, uh,
Public safety.
Public safety building that we wasn't able to get funded for.
Right.
That way, we can get around to two hundred thousand dollars a year that the county is holding over our head, and which is gonna be able to be more now, based on what they're asking us to be given too. So let's bring, uh, a lot of things that this city needs, where this place is worth on, and bring us hope.
So, so an agreement on what tasks we would assign as far as what, what we want to do, that benefits the greater good, so the most amount of people that are affected, would get that assistance being a priority versus a smaller amount of groups. So we're all in agreement, these are the directions we're gonna travel, regardless of where they're located, regardless of who they're gonna affect, as long as it's for the greater good of the citizens that are on board with it. If it starts getting compartmentalized and nitpicky, I'll be just as out against it as fast as you turn a hamburger bread.
No, I, I don't, I think they're, they're looking at, at the big picture.
Yeah, they're professionals, I'm hip on that.
Right, when she presented at the, at the current conference, they were, they were talking about, uh, a fire truck. That's what got my attention, I'm like, fire truck, you know, those are the bigger pictures. Uh, I, I, you know, I'm not talking about if we can get some.
Police cars.
Right, police cars. I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, you know, large public safety grants, I'm talking about.
Greater good things.
Right.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, when I say neighborhood revitalization, or downtown revitalization, or all those things, I'm not saying, um, specifically this war.
No, no, I'm not taking it that way, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm, I'm just making sure that as we move forward, that is understood, that we're gonna do it for the greater good. And if that means that it's downtown, or it means it's in more six, seven, eight, five, whatever, for the greater good, that most benefit for the most amount of people are gonna be served.
We understand.
I don't know, sometimes I wonder if they make decisions up here that aren't for the greater good, and so it's very confusing. So I want to make sure we're clear about these things, because I'm tired of being victimized by these not great good decisions.
We understand.
All right, good. I'm trying to pound that into my head, because we had a contract conversation, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about contracts fifteen minutes, I would assume we all know that too, but we talked about that for twenty minutes.
It warrants our current and present understanding.
Good.
So we're looking at thirty-two allocations a year.
That were almost.
And I think, I think, I think we could do three, and I think this is.
We can get five, right?
If we get five out of the thirty-two.
I'm gonna wait.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
Um, I have my head.
Oh, I haven't even got, go ahead, I haven't got mine, go ahead.
Uh, sorry.
I have my perspective.
Uh-huh. Oh, that's fine.
I think we just skip to Councilwoman Jackson, we're, we're back at you.
Well, basically, you wanted to just go, go ahead and give me the timeline, uh, for the process of the fire chief. Uh, the fire chief position has currently been listed, uh, for, uh, anyone who would like to apply. I would also be married to Melon, went to the fire college, letting them know that we're looking for a chief. Uh, next, uh, the committee has already been informed to sit in on the search committee, Councilwoman Youngblood, and the Public Safety Committee will be part of it. And also with the council members who would like to, uh, chime in, sit in. It will be open to the public, and once we go ahead and coordinate, uh, who's gonna come in, we're gonna advertise, I mean, not gonna advertise, but, uh, open it up, the time, the date of the interview, uh, for, um, our next fire chief.
What's the deadline for submission?
The deadline for submission is gonna be, uh, July thirty-first.
Uh, is it online? Is it, you gotta come down here, Peter?
I hope it's online.
I mean, you could go down, off, down here, you may not get to do it.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully it's online, uh.
Ask him to put someone in the clerk's office.
Yeah, put someone in the clerk's office, online. Uh, also, we're looking at, hopefully, starting the process, interview process, second week of August. And by the end of August, have a nomination for the next fire chief. That is a projected timeline.
That's wonderful, yes, I can confirm that. Um, Mr. President, if, if, please be candid, if it's not appropriate to exist at this time, please say, regarding the police chief, um, can you, can you tell us, or is it not appropriate to say at this time, exactly where we are with our, that's my question, uh, with our acting chief, or interim chief, or?
Glad you asked. Uh, uh, chief, interim chief, uh, Green would start July thirty-first. Also, I'm gonna ask the council, uh, he need to go back for some certification, training as chief. I think it starts July twenty-ninth through August first, summer, I wanna let you know. And I feel that it would be in the best interest of the council if we, uh, pay for this, this training.
Will you go and put that on consent for tomorrow?
Yeah, we're, we're putting on consent.
Okay.
How about you? I don't know, I supposed to get the invoice, uh, from him, um, tonight. I put it on the center generally move forward with it. Also, we didn't.
And, and, I asked you that, in that, um, also. And, and I don't know, you know how the street committee has things, and you just hear things out on the street, and I don't know if there's any credibility to it or not. I had heard that there had been some requests from some, for some questionable, um, expenditures that in my opinion don't need to be happening, while we just have a, an acting, you know, we don't have interim chiefs right now, we have acting chiefs, the semantic, we, we know the difference between that. Um, but, you know, any kind of budgetary changes, or any things that, that did, uh, you know, I, I just think that they don't, those changes don't need to be made at this time. Um, and I, I, could you speak to that?
Also, too, uh, it's a fair way into what I'm gonna ask the council members. Uh, I got with Mrs. Wade, that we may have to do a transfer of a line item for one particular business, I'm not gonna name the business, but, uh, I'm gonna ask, if we could tomorrow, uh, forty-nine hundred dollars for maintenance repair, for, uh, for police vehicles. And, uh, I get with y'all, let you know more about it, it's, uh. Yeah, I'll let you know more about it.
You gonna tell us?
I will tell, yeah, I'll tell, tell, tell you what it's for, but I'm asking y'all if you would move forward with it. It's only roughly about forty-nine hundred dollars. And it's been, uh, it's been way overdue, I just put it up there.
Well, I think it goes off that we all have, not, that the less vehicles are purchased.
And this particular company, you know, uh, he has continued to do the work for us, and, uh.
And the face being the pain.
Yeah.
Are you sending outstanding bill?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You're not saying?
No, 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 it's outstanding bill.
You're not saying we wrecked some more cars?
No, 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 it's outstanding bill.
That's a big pain.
No, yeah, so.
So we have wrecked the cars on the way out of town?
Awful, awful, doesn't it look bad?
I hope not.
That's what I thought you were saying.
Uh, Ms. Jackson.
But I would put it on, I would put it on the center generally, then I would let you know the business name and everything, because I don't call business name.
Good idea.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, and you may not be able to talk about this here, but you said you were gonna get back with us about compensation, uh, once you, you said, you had accepted, coming back, um, we had talked about this, are we gonna?
And last.
Then we had the executive session, how, I mean, how does that work?
We will.
When you decide, how is this gonna be compensated, and what is gonna be compensated, and how long?
In a second, I took it on the, for the conference, but I need to get the amount.
I'm not nobody to come from, we're talking about this compensation, how, what is his salary, his wage?
Oh, basically, the contract, also, we all go into executive session prior to voting on it, uh, before it's day, and I'm waiting to get the contract coming off.
Okay. We're running an executive session for?
For the voting contract.
Who's contract?
Uh, Chief Green, Emerald Chief Green.
It's private?
Huh?
It's a contract, it's not a.
It's a contract, but it's some other things too, that we definitely need to discuss.
Contract of service.
Contract of service, yeah, but it's some other things. Yeah.
Yeah, but contracts are not practice, why, that's why.
No, 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 it's not.
Why we want to the bank?
It's not that, but some other things.
It's something else.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I said it's a contract, not a, for you.
Also, too, I'm gonna need y'all here, uh. I have a business owner that I've been working for the last two years, uh, a public business here in Southern, and, uh, and there's a product coming to this particular business. Uh, the trucks are getting stuck in some potholes. And some of the trucks are turned on with the products. And I've been talking with the president of the company, and also another public administrator, and I'm thinking we rectify this product. And I'm asking the council members, if possible, if we can go in and use roughly about fourteen thousand of that, uh.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am. That fourteen thousand dollars, uh, I would also, tonight, text in the name of the business, it's a public business.
Well, it is, I think you should push consent that.
Okay, we will consent, okay.
What is the rest of the council plan?
Yeah.
People we got, don't lose what we got.
No, we can't lose what we got.
Yeah, text me what you're talking about, oh, y'all know, but I don't.
They can all, they can all, they can also do the, do the tough.
We're in the, well, I'm just saying, I feel like we're in the mood for passing out money, but let me know what we're talking about.
I don't want nobody else to sense the pressure of pushing us on.
I'm just saying, we passing out a lot of money.
Okay. Also.
I need to know why.
Forty, uh. Yeah, mm-hmm.
All right.
All right, since it's twenty-twenty, uh, I'm gonna ask.
Oh, Ms. Fredwick, while you're talking about that, that road, that hundred and twenty-five thousand, you had that list, and you mentioned it one time, we were supposed to get, I talked to, uh, Mr. Hawes last night, and we were supposed to get with them, uh, regarding the potholes in our areas and things of that sort. But you had also mentioned that you had a.
That book?
Of roads that was three thousand dollars, and that we may better utilize that by doing some of the roads with the hundred and twenty-five thousand, so.
I, I bring that book tomorrow.
And I'll pass it on to you, and then we use the fourteen thousand, and then a smaller amount of it, if the council is okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Since you brought Mr. Hawes, where does he go move forward, trying to, 'cause I like giving him my list.
Yeah, he's ready for, waiting for the rest of the council list, and that's why I'm giving him those, that's book, with every list, and then from everybody, because the president stated that it would be better utilized if we look at the mass sheets, and if there were five roads on there, they're two, three thousand dollars, still look at those three thousand dollars on it, and everybody do a fifteen hundred dollar pothole. Just the potholes moving down.
Yes, ma'am, please, those, hit that list of Mr. Hawes, we need to work on.
You need a new list?
For the potholes, they said they had, they had this mix.
I hadn't heard back from the West Ham, so I mean, I, I can't get an answer, yeah, I got a sinkhole, West Ham. I hadn't heard anything back from that in months, so, answer that question, I'll give you the potholes. I mean, hell, give you the, I got a groundwater issue getting made start over there, and he's supposed to sue us, I'm gonna get an answer on that one, do you want to worry about potholes? He needs to get over there and get that one figured out, I'll give you the potholes. He's gonna hit them some, on, on the way to the damn hole.
Just, just, listen, give it.
Again, I will do that again.
Right, well, well, what I spoke to him about, this is specifically for the hundred and twenty-five thousand, so I'm not sure about public saving and how they fit into the hundred and twenty-five thousand.
It just protects us from getting sued for more money.
Okay, for the hundred.
Because I've already done it once before.
The hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars specifically that we put for any sinkhole, potholes, things of that sort. All council members were asked to submit, and he reported, wow, prior to that, those will come back.
He got my name, I can give it to him.
He said, he, he said the whole person that he received.
I was gonna meet him there one day, remember I asked him?
Hard, hard to know where you are when you're at the beach three days a week.
Stop.
That's why I thought.
Mr. President, while we're.
Well, I can do that, because it's right, because I know.
While we're on, um, streets and roads and stuff, there is going to be a, um, a, a celebration in, in, or, or, and I know this package is gonna be blocked. Um, um, this young lady is turning eighty-two years old. And she is, she is in, she lives in the curb where the day turns into church street, if, if you leave with that area. So they're having a celebration in an area that's, uh, congested, but not a lot of traffic goes through there. And so on her side of the road, uh, her, her daughters called me to ask to see if they could block that side by the street so that there is a curb coming around, so they're gonna have a part of the dogs, and so people are gonna be parking regardless. And if we could block that side of, that's coming around the curb so that it is not dangerous, because the event is actually gonna be at her home, uh, they don't wanna bring her outside of her home. Uh, she's turning eighty-two, and so when she said that, um, concerning traffic, I wanted to know if we could do that, uh, and make that happen, so that everybody's kept safe.
Okay, we just need the ballroom, move forward, ballroom.
Okay.
Can you?
And then Ms. Hyatt, if anybody needed to know.
Can you text me that?
Uh-huh, I would, I would.
Also, with the, since it's twenty-twenty, I'm gonna ask council members, uh, if they would, uh, get engaged with that process, uh, I'm gonna see whether it be possible that we can put a tablet downstairs where people are coming in, and force the census to engage them, if they haven't already felt, filled it out. And, uh, Mr. Scott will be meeting with the council members, uh, I think next week sometime. There, there's some funding for use, uh, from, from the census, that you can maybe put groceries, an award, balance, that they would be willing to help, council members, help, uh, support this endeavor.